The closed meeting adjourned at eight twenty seven P M. We have several items for approval of minutes on the agenda this evening. We have the mayor and common council closed meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty one, the mayor and common council closed meeting of January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two, the mayor's community meeting minutes of February seventh, two thousand twenty two. Bless you.
Thank you.
The mayor and common council special meeting of February ninth, two thousand twenty two, the mayor and common council closed meeting of February ninth, two thousand twenty two, the mayor and common council meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty two, and the mayor and common council closed meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty two. They have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Mr. Dayhoff to approve the minutes of these meetings and a second by Mr. Hoth. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. We have four items on the consent calendars this evening. They have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There have been a motion to approve the consent calendar by Mr. Dayhoff, second by Mr. Cavaci. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now it's time for the report from the mayor. Dr. Becker.
Thank you. We're moving right along this evening.
We are. Sorry, I caught you.
No, 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 I'm prepared. So just a couple of things to report on. Last week, Mr. Glass and I spent a few hours with the film crew, filming out at the Pure Water Westminster water recycling plant. So they're putting together a short film on our, for informational purposes and sort of advertisement purposes for our pure water plant. So that was a, that was a fun hour so that I was out there. We both had to have powder on our noses. Throw that one out there. This isn't, wasn't really a mayoral role, but on Saturday, I was able to referee the Carroll County Public Schools Powerlifting Meet. And so I don't, I don't know if you know about powerlifting. I've been powerlifting for a number of years, but it's, it's a phenomenal sport. And every, every year Carroll County Public Schools puts together a powerlifting meet for students in the high school who are powerlifting. And this is probably about the sixth or seventh year that I've refereed this meet. And it's really great to see all these young people come out and move insane amounts of weight. I think some of the winners in the weight class lifted over a thousand pounds that day, the total of their three lifts. I mean, just amazing, amazing athletes. On March twenty second, so looking ahead just a little bit, on March twenty second at five P M, at forty five West Main Street, I will be hosting a community meeting regarding information about the pool. I know last week a memo went out to the community regarding the construction on the Westminster Pool. And when that, you know, when the construction is slated for, what is that going to look like? How long is it going to take? And so the meeting on March twenty second will be to answer some questions, to show off the plan for the pool and to really get people excited about what is, what's going to be in that space come two thousand twenty three. And then finally, just a side note here, on March twelfth, I know we have a lot going on in the city on that day, which I'm sure Mrs. Gruber will fill us in on later. But seven P M. on March twelfth, there is a play taking place at McDaniel. There are two plays taking place at McDaniel. One play is called The Smores Wars and the other play is called The One Star Resort. These plays are being put on by Barrier Free's Inclusive Theater Company, and they're taking place at McDaniel Hall, sorry, Alumni Hall at McDaniel. And their theater company is composed of neurodiverse adults aged eighteen and plus with their mentors, and they create full-scale productions. The reason I'm bringing this up is that on seven P M. on March twelfth, there is a cameo appearance where I will be appearing as myself in the play. And so I think that I'm going to, you know, let folks know about that in case they would like to come out and support the, this theater company. So that's all I have. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Becker. I'm glad you get to play yourself because I know you're good at that.
Thank you.
Sure. So move right along. Reports from standing committees. Begin with, speaking of the arts, we'll begin with Mr. Dayhoff to give the report on the Carroll County Arts Council.
It's a great segue. The Carroll County Arts Council will present the fifteenth annual Peep Show. It's coming up live at the Town Mall of Westminster. Let's see here, it's the fifteenth annual. It'll be held Friday, April the eighth through Monday, April the eighteenth at the Town Mall. And that'll be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Hoth.
Thank you, Mr. President. We ended up not having a Economic and Community Development Committee meeting on February sixteenth for a variety of reasons, but our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March seventeenth at three thirty P M. We will be meeting in person at forty five West Main Street. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hoth. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I can report that the committee met today this afternoon, and we had a very good conversation with Mr. Graham Dodge of Magic to discuss a variety of initiatives that Magic has, has brought to us for our consideration. We had the opportunity to, you know, gather some more information about all of those items and, you know, be able to use this new information to help factor into our planning for the budget process. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Cavaci.
So a few things, Mr. President. The chief has informed me that he is getting ready for Leadership Carroll, which is up and coming, and it seems like he's got some neat stuff planned for that group when they come in, maybe police dogs and SWAT stuff and all kinds of neat things. So, and, and the chief actually went through that program himself, so I'm sure he's going to do a great job at, you know, educating that group of folks in Leadership Carroll about what W P D does. We also had a notable arrest that took place, a Mr. Donald Elay. Is that how you say his name? Ailey?
Ely.
Ely. He's, he's a pretty regular shopper, apparently, in our automobiles and, and things around town. He was arrested, I don't know, less than a year ago and locked up for breaking into cars and, and things like that. Got out and guess what? Right back to it. And through the good work of our police department, they arrested him again. And he's currently in custody, which is wonderful. But, you know, the, the chief pointed out to me, it's important that a lot of these steps are, they're, he's up, people like him are opportunistic. If a car's unlocked, they're going to check the doors, they're going to go in, they're going to steal stuff. If a shed's unlocked, they're going to go in and take things. So, you know, it's incumbent upon folks to make sure that they're locking their property up and not leaving their cars unlocked and, you know, keys in their cars and things like that. Police Department is working on an overdose to action grant, so that's good. I know the chief is very proactive when it comes to those things. And we, the department's also been continuing to get a bunch of reports of scams where people are asking folks to go out and get gift cards. It actually happened in my own company. One of my account managers got an email from me saying to go out and buy some gift cards. It was a gift from one of our clients. He actually did it. Luckily, he didn't send the codes. He, right before he actually sent all the codes for a thousand dollars of gift cards, he actually called me and said, hey, this just doesn't seem like you. And I'm like, it's not me. So luckily, he was able to, to get his money back, or our money back. And then we've seen a little bit of a decrease in shoplifting from our big box stores, which is wonderful news. And I know that, again, the department works with those folks to try to mitigate those things and help them do a better job of, of helping us so that that isn't going on. So I know that's partially, at least somewhat, due to the good work of the chief and his staff. So that's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. And can you give a report for the Public Works Committee as well?
I will. The mayor has already talked about the videography that's taking place, so I won't go into any detail about that. Slate roof, there's, I think there's still tarp up there, right? On top? So that's going to start on three seventh, which is good news. Annual paving, which everybody loves the paving projects. I know every once in a blue moon, when my street gets paved, I just love driving down a nice new flat street. So I know any, any of the folks that are in line to get that paving done are going to be excited. That's getting ready to start up. And so one of the things that Jeff had mentioned to me, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Glass had mentioned to me was that, apparently, I guess with these, these storms we just recently had, there was, and I saw this after you had communicated this to me. So a lot of other municipalities, Baltimore City being one of them, put a boatload of salt and brine down for the storm that didn't actually happen. We got a little bit of ice on some trees, but our folks, was it Steve Schlossberg? Is that who, who took the decision? So Steve made the call, which is always risky not to do it. And it saved the city a bunch of money and a bunch of man-hours, and he made a hundred percent the right call. And I have to say, I think you guys are a hundred, about a hundred, right now, about a thousand, I should say, for this past winter. You guys put it down when we needed it, and you didn't put it down when we didn't need it. I drove into Baltimore over the weekend and the roads were just white dust everywhere because it never actually happened. So great work there. That's it, Mr. President. Sorry for two lengthy reports.
That's all right. Thank you very much. Lots of information to share. Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, no report, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I have nothing for the Technology Committee. I'll move on now to council comments and discussion. This is the time when council members have the opportunity to share anything that they'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda elsewhere or in the committee report. And we'll begin with Mr. Hoth.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things I'll mention is, number one, the Maryland Municipal League's Legislative Committee is wrapping up their, our bill review. We have our last meeting with Bill Review on Wednesday. And then there's a lot past that, but that really involves the staff work as the bills are moving through the different chambers. So it's been a, it's been an interesting experience being on that Legislative Committee. To no surprise to all of you, I'm a pretty vocal member. So, yes. So I think for the most part, that's like, maybe not by everyone, but that's okay.
It's okay.
And the other thing I will mention, but, but so I will keep you posted. And matter of fact, one of our agenda item addresses something related to that the M M L Legislative Committee, which we'll get to under New Business. The other thing I will mention is I was also at the powerlifting competition, but as a parent, my son was competing in that. And I think it's a, you know, a great life lesson because I know my son started going about five and a half years ago when I started going to the gym because of all my back issues. And, you know, the one thing, you know, I kind of think of, kind of relating it to city government, is just continually making progress and you will get somewhere. And I think that's very much what these kids do. I know my son only weighs a hundred and fifty pounds and his total, total weight lift was nine hundred and forty five pounds, which is pretty darn oppressive for his weight. But that's because he kept on plugging away. And I think that's what our council has been doing over this, since I've been here this past nine months, is keep on plugging away and slowly but surely make progress. And hopefully, you know, five and a half years from now, we'll be looking back on a lot of really great accomplishments that we've made. So just kind of tying that back in. So that's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoth. Mr. Cavaci.
Thanks, Mr. President. Cathedral thinking, right? So the only thing I wanted to comment on is I am super excited because this will be our last meeting before it happens, that we are getting back into the strolls and they're going to be full board. I'm, I'm real excited about our up and coming Celtic canter, not so much the cantering part, but more the Celtic bar hopping part that I'll be doing. So that's excited. I'm really, really looking forward to it. I'm hopeful that it'll be a big giant event. And hopefully, all of our strolls are just record crowds and, and hopefully, we can't even barely move on Main Street. That would be wonderful. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Normally, we do council comments. If I have a comment, I do it last, but I can't resist the lead in from Mr. Cavaci. So we're, so we're very excited that our Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Gruber, has come up with an innovative new part of the Celtic canter, the point five K. And when we heard about this, mayor and council talked about, we talked about it together. We just couldn't resist the opportunity. So, so the mayor and council are all going to participate in the point five K together. We think this is, you know, it's, it's a nice event and we're looking forward to it. And I have to say, Ms. Gilbert is going to do the real five K ahead of that because she actually is athletic. Mr. Hoth could probably do it too, if he wanted to. But anyway, we are, but we're looking forward to doing this, Ms. Gruber. It's going to be a lot of fun and we're going to, it's going to help prep Mr. Cavaci for his later activities.
Yeah. Build up, build up a third.
That's right.
So I was hoping it was a point one K. I guess point five.
So we'll, we'll move on to Ms. Gilbert for any comments she may have.
I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the commissioners for their service for their past eight years, I guess, and their willingness, willingness to work with all the municipalities. I attended the state of county address at the Carroll County Arts Council last week and just wanted to thank them. I know the last couple of years have been challenging for almost any elected official. So I just wanted to do a shout out to them. I also wanted to thank all those folks that are working on the Legislative Committee organized by Mike McMullin in the Chamber of Commerce. We met again this, this morning, actually, eleven thirty, still morning hours. Many of the folks work really hard, keeping an eye out on all the proposed legislation through the House and the Senate and everything that would be affecting Carroll County and our business community. So if anybody had any thoughts or concerns about any upcoming bills, email me or give me a shout. We have a couple more meetings left and then that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you for calling to my attention the point five K. I'll be on the medic unit that day. I'll bring extra oxygen. The state of the county was done really well, and I really appreciate it. And I've also, I publicly thanked the commissioners on behalf of the mayor and council for their work with the municipalities. And also want to make sure that I give a shout out to Councilmember Huff. I served on the Legislative Committee for quite a number of years, and it is an awful lot of work. It's an awful lot of work. I also picked up weight because I stopped by the, the bagel place, Einstein Bagel. I think it's still there before I went to the meetings.
We've been online the whole year.
Oh, my word, have you?
Yeah.
So I used to go down there and it's, it's a long trip. Yeah, it's a long trip, but I really appreciate your work on that. That's really important stuff. The M M L does legislative advocacy extremely well. We're well-known for it, so thank you for that work. That's all my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Yeah, I did a year on the Legislative Committee. It's a lot of work. It really is.
Yeah.
So thanks for doing that for us, Mr. Hoth. We appreciate your service there. Move on now to unfinished business. There's no unfinished business, I put time where. Does anybody have any unfinished business to bring for the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. We have two items under New Business. The first is the approval of contract carnival services for Fall Fest. And we'll go to Ms. Gruber for that.
Yes, good evening. In the past, Westminster Fall Fest was operated by a five oh one C three organization, Fall Fest Incorporated, in cooperation with the city. And historically, Fall Fest Inc. would procure and contract as a vendor to provide rides, games, and concessions for the four-day festival. Since the dissolution of Fall Fest Inc. in two thousand eighteen, the city became responsible for procuring and selecting the carnival services provider. So in two thousand nineteen, the city issued its first request for proposals for carnival services with an option to renew the contract annually for three years, provided that vendor gave us satisfactory performance. Snyder's Amusements was the selected vendor. They performed each year at satisfactory or above satisfactory level, resulting in an annual contract renewal. The two thousand nineteen contract is now expired. And in response to the contract expiration, the city placed this opportunity back out to bid on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty two. The request for proposals for carnival services was announced and posted on e Maryland Marketplace and the city's website. Funding for this project is allocated in the city's operational budget, and the total contract amount payable to the vendor is based on amusement ticket sales during Fall Fest operations. This year, one company, Snyder's Attractions from Green Castle, Pennsylvania, responded to the R F P. The bid response was complete and the proposal's content exceeded the minimum guidelines outlined in the bid documents. Snyder's Attractions has a long history of providing quality, reliable carnival services for this event. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council accept a proposal from Snyder's Attractions to provide carnival services for Fall Fest, as outlined in the proposal, for a minimum term of one year with an option to renew for up to three years and authorize the mayor's execution of the associated contract.
All right, pretty good. Thank you, Ms. Gruber. So anybody have, well, let's get a motion first. Do you have a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it.
There's been a motion by Ms. Gilbert and a second by Mr. Dayhoff. Is there any discussion or any question for Ms. Gruber?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
They do a good job. Yeah, they do a good job. They're very, very customer service oriented. I have volunteered for Fall Fest since forever. And I've been recently volunteering with the Westminster Band, and they do a really, really nice job. So thank you, Ms. Gruber. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And we will continue using Snyder's Attractions. Thank you very much. The next item is a discussion on the Maryland State Highway User Revenue Bill. That's currently before the Maryland General Assembly. This is something that Mr. Hoth wanted to bring to our attention. So I will turn to Mr. Hoth.
Thank you, Mr. President. So earlier, I guess towards the end of last year, when the Legislative Committee for the Maryland Municipal League first met, we decided that highway user revenues was going to be one of our legislative priorities. My understanding, it's been a legislative priority before, but we really wanted to push it this year, partly out of the thought that there is, you know, quite frankly, the state budget is much better than it's been in a long time. So I'll be frank, if we have any chance of, of getting the Highway User Revenue Bill passed to return things to the pre-two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and nine recession levels and eliminate the sunset provision, now is truly the year to do it. And just for the viewing public, I just want you to get a sense, I pulled this out of our budget, which Ms. Imholtz had provided me. You know, back in two thousand and nine, it looked like we got somewhere around eight hundred and fifty thousand, and then it went down to under a hundred and stayed under a hundred for a while. This is this chart right here. And I believe just now in fiscal year two thousand twenty two and fiscal year two thousand twenty three, we're finally back at the levels that we were getting in two thousand and nine. So, and so that's had a devastating impact for us, and we're not alone. Because, you know, in two thousand and nine, it looks like we were, as I said, getting about eight hundred and fifty. And that's, I think we're due eight hundred and twenty three in fiscal year two thousand twenty two, and the projection for fiscal year two thousand twenty three is eight hundred and forty five thousand. So my, my point to this is that the, the bill related to getting it back to the pre-two thousand nineteen recession levels is being heard on the Senate side in person on Wednesday, March the ninth. I have volun, they already have enough people lined up for testimony and all that. I volunteered with staff, M M L staff, that they need some extra live bodies that I'd be glad to go down there and sit in the gallery. The House side is on Thursday, March the tenth, and that is still Viva Zoom. But one of the things that M M L is looking for is a official letter of support for these bills from the various municipalities. So what I'm here tonight is to ask that we make a motion, an approval motion, to send a official letter of support down to Annapolis to vote the House and the Senate in support of this bill. I've emailed some particulars to staff, even providing some documentation regarding some examples of how this has impacted us and, and how it makes it more difficult for us to maintain our road. So the idea is that just that we make a motion tonight to put in a letter of support, which then Ms. Imholtz will work on putting together, and then that the mayor could sign and submit on our behalf. So does anyone have any specific questions related to that?
Also, before we go to discussion, we need to get a motion. So, Mr. Hoth, I'll take it, you've made a motion, although you've participated with debate and we will not vote against you.
Okay.
But, so there's a, yeah. Doug's staying calm, it's okay. Mr. Barber's staying calm. So there's a motion to authorize the mayor to send a letter on behalf of the city of Westminster, you know, in support of the Highway User Revenue Bill.
And I'll second it.
There's a second from Mr. Dayhoff. And is there any discussion?
You know, in the past, we've done, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. In the past, we passed a resolution. Doesn't help write it, but the letter would be great. Yeah. Can we get a copy of the letter? Because I've written about H U R. before, maybe I'll take the opportunity to write it.
Certainly, yeah, if we, if we do a letter, we'll certainly show you.
Cool. I really appreciate your work on this. I think the first time it was a legislation, legislative action request was nineteen seventy six. We've been working on this a long time. I would love, you were the Assistant Secretary of Transportation. You should have, you should have fixed it then.
In the Glenn Denny administration, we supported the Highway User Revenue. Wasn't necessary.
It would be fun if it were a dedicated revenue stream. It really, it really should be. And that's what it was originally intended to be in the nineteen fifties, but it has not. I wholeheartedly support it, Mr. Hoth. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
That's great. We should absolutely.
I, I just, you know, my only comment is that, I mean, I'm certainly supportive. I remember, and Mr. Cavaci will remember, you know, we had some tough years when, you know, when this money went away for a little while. And the city was really struggling during that time period. I knew Mr. Glass was trying to find pennies to patch potholes and, if I may be, maybe alliterative. And it was tough, and the city found ways to do it. And we, we made the decision at that time to wean ourselves off of this revenue because we were concerned that it would go away and not come back. And even if it did come back, it would go away again. So, so certainly, some, you know, some stability, you know, some certainty, it would be welcome, I think, to municipalities across the state if they do wind up having a dedicated source of revenue as opposed to this being something that, you know, can be, you know, sort of, you know, during difficult times, you know, taken away by the legislature or even by the county, you know, who held on to a lot of those funds in years past as well. So, so, yeah, I think it's a good idea to, you know, if legislature can think.
So, Mr. President, I think that ties into, you know, one of my, you know, with serving with you on finance. You know, I think that one thing that's been very clear to me is that we try to be conservative. So I agree, even if this gets approved, and we need to always be prepared that, and I think we are pretty conservative with how we spend and budget our money going forward, that nothing is ever a guarantee.
Right.
And that we don't want to be in a similar position where we suddenly lose all this revenue, you know, three years from now because state budgets are a lot worse. So I, I agree with that. But I think we do a lot of, from what I have seen so far. But I think we do a lot of, from what I have seen so far, if you think on the finance committee, we do a really good job of kind of planning things out and being pretty conservative.
Well, Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
Didn't feel like I had to say anything, but just, I guess, sort of piggyback a little. The one thing we have to remember is this is fantastic and I 100% wholeheartedly support it. But the bottom line is the state can do, you know, triple it or quadruple it. Problem is, we still may never see it. Because at the end of the day, the county still has to make the decision, if I'm not mistaken, to give us this money. Isn't that correct?
No, no, no.
But I thought this, I thought this flows through the county first.
It comes directly to us. Yes.
I'm mistaken.
It comes directly to us.
Okay.
That's not always been the case in the past.
I, I thought the county kept some of it.
Actually, I think, I think.
County does give us some of it. County does give some.
I thought so, but we get a direct stream.
But part of, but we, but there's, part of the money goes to the county and then the county then passes some of that through to us. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
I believe it used to be that it all went through the county. But what happened when the Hoagard administration early on brought it back, one of the things that MML lobbied for, as I recall, was, you know, some guarantee that municipalities would receive funds directly. And so I think that's why, what you're thinking of, Mr. Cavaci, is I think that's the difference in, you know, how the program is run now as opposed to how it was run prior to that when we did lose.
And the, and the bill specifically allocates some to the county and some to the municipality. So it's, it's clear that it's a distinct stream.
Right. Any further conversation about this? Right. So the motion is to authorize the mayor to, to send a letter. Presumably she will work with the staff to do that. And, you know, we'll get the letter out in time for the hearings. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And we will look forward to seeing a draft from the mayor. Thank you. That's it for new business. Departmental reports, we will turn it over to our city administrator, Ms. Imholtz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember DeHaas, do you have a report from the fire department?
Bingo's back.
Sorry?
Bingo's back.
Okay.
That's exciting. I've been the caller for two weeks in a row. I have not seen you in the audience.
Sounds like I need to.
May the record reflect that.
I think that Ms. Imholtz has enough demands on her.
You think so? I would call all your numbers.
Heard it here.
Move along, Mr. DeHaas.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so the thing we're most excited about is next weekend Celtic Cancer. So we're going to move over to the recreational parks department, Ms. Gruber.
Yes, I'm going to take two weekends yet. March 12th is, is the day for the Celtic Cancer.
We're so excited.
I started to sweat a little bit. We have some really exciting things going on this year. One of the most exciting is probably our best participation in the pub crawl since we have been doing this event. We have 12 bars and restaurants participating this year. Lost Lion, Maggie's, 84 East, O Lordens, Raphael's, Johansson's, Mediterranean, Rock Salt, The Stables, Sergio's, Ernie's Place and Paradisio. And so our participation in this was so great, we actually had to hire a second trolley. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to circulate amongst all of these bars and restaurants in, you know, quick enough time to pick people up and get them to where they needed to go. So we are certainly excited about that. We also have Westminster's Strumpest Kid Competition that we added to the festival this year. Kids will participate in three different Highland-style games. Caper toss, a stern foot and a sheep toss. They'll participate in three different age groups, four to six, seven to nine and 10 to 12. And the little Irishman or woman with the longest distance all added together will win a very special prize. So we're happy to be hosting that and we're excited that that will attract some new and interested participants that might not be there to run. And moreover.
This is a direct result of having like two weightlifters as mayor and a runner.
That's true. We have had back-to-back. Now we're looking at mayors, what is going on?
And our most exciting partnership is For the Race. We have partnered with athletes serving athletes. And for those of you that might not know about that, their mission is to elevate the quality of life for individuals with limited mobility by empowering them to train for and participate in mainstream running events. So you will see teams of athletes out there serving other athletes that may have limited mobility so that they can accomplish the goal of a 5K. So, yeah, we're certainly looking forward to all of these new facets to the event. And we are still chugging along at about 100 runners surpassing our registration benchmark from 2020. So we're sitting at 800 people registered today going into the 2020 event. We had 895 people register the Friday night before the event. So we are going strong and we're looking for a great day in the city of Westminster.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
So I guess we're going to have to register. You get, you get, you get six more now that have to register. When is five of us?
Mr. DeHaas said he just doesn't realize it yet.
No, I assumed Anne was already registered.
Yes, I am already registered.
When is the point one?
I like point one better.
The point one. I make a motion that it's a point one.
The point five K is at 11:00 AM.
11:00 AM.
Okay.
I'll be just getting up.
And there's a great promotional video on Facebook if you haven't seen it, so.
Featuring Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, but that might be the promotional video for next year.
Maybe you can get some slow motion with me kind of bouncing along.
Right after, right after Mr. Cavaci got elected, he ran two blocks in his bare feet and apprehended a criminal.
That was the point, point oh five.
He really did. Okay. 11:00 AM.
These events take an enormous amount of staff time, staff brain power. There's a plan A, B, C, D, E, F, G and X, Y, Z. And Ms. Gruber and her team do such an excellent job. There's quite a lot of other staff that are involved in these events. I say this every time we have an event, just remind everybody. There are contracts that have to be signed and filed, so the clerk's involved, the finance department's involved in making sure everybody gets paid on time in advance. The streets department obviously helps shut things down, set things up. The police department's looking out for things. We've been dragged planning in sometimes to help. It's all hands on deck and we really appreciate the Recreation and Parks Department for all that they do. So thank you, Ms. Gruber.
Mr. President, I, I was just going to say that the staff does a phenomenal job with these and, you know, it's really great for a city of our size that we have these kind of events. And I, I know personally, I, I ended up buying two VIP tables for the wine stroll and I have friends coming that have never been to Westminster before. They're coming from Baltimore and I have another couple that's coming from northern Baltimore County that I don't think has been out here before, all for the wine stroll. So it's a great opportunity for people to, from out of the area, to kind of get a taste for Westminster. So I just, I commend the city for, you know, having that long history of doing these great events because it is phenomenal. So anyway, sorry, Mr. President.
So, Mr. President, just real, I just can't let this opportunity pass by. My wife was at a Dave Matthews concert a couple of years ago in New Jersey. People sitting in front of her, they struck a conversation up. She mentioned she's from Westminster and they said, oh, yeah, we go there every year for their oyster stroll from New Jersey. And they knew nothing else about Westminster, but they come for the oyster stroll from, she runs into one concert in New Jersey. Crazy. Unbelievable.
All right, thank you. So we're going to, no other questions or comments for the Rec Department. We'll move over to the Housing Department. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Just wanted to advise the board that we, the mayor and council, that we're concluding our process of refreshing a waiting list. And at the next meeting, I'll give you a full report in terms of the numbers, what the actual numbers are at that point in time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions for housing? We've got no report for the Human Resources Department, but we will move on to the Planning Department.
I have no report tonight.
Wow.
Any questions for the Planning Department?
That might be the first time.
All right. All right. So then we'll move on to the Police Department. Chief Klebwell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To follow up on what Councilman Cavaci talked about earlier, Leadership Carroll, class of a little over 40 this year. So they have monthly events and March event is Justice and Law Day scheduled for March the 8th. So myself and other leaders of local agencies put together a day's program so that the class can be exposed to Carroll County's criminal justice system, the law enforcement agencies, their strategies and challenges, court systems, state attorney's office and more. They get to go through several scenarios as if they were police officers. They get to tour a room that's set up by an outreach firm and state attorney's office called Threats in Plain Sight, which is good for parents of adolescents. They get Q and A with the agency leaders. We get a canine demonstration, a working lunch with Circuit Court Judge Hacker. And they learn about all, all types of interesting things related to the criminal justice system. So I know Mr. McMullin always says it's a favorite day for Leadership Carroll class. A follow-up to the internet and telephone scams. So mostly vulnerable adults are targeted in that. We push out through our outreach social media outlets tips to avoid becoming a victim of these particular scams. I mean, the easiest thing to do is hang up or not follow any direction to withdraw money under any circumstance until you talk to a family member or, or hang up and call the local police department. The issue is that the scammers are pretty good at convincing people either on the phone or an email. Usually it's some type of a threat that money's owed to the IRS. Family member needs to be bailed out, something that plays on the emotions of the adults. So we would ask if you, if you have somebody in your family, it probably just takes one conversation to prevent them from becoming the next victim of one of these scams. They do happen too frequently. Our over to action grant-funded case manager position. So this part, this is part of our comprehensive strategy to address the drug epidemic. We do it with enforcement, redistribution, we do a lot of education, prevention and in this case, follow-up and resource connection for individuals with addiction. So this is an excellent opportunity to have this grant-funded position. We're directly out of the police department, supplement our police officers when they respond to these types of calls for service. It also frees up the police officer to get back to their primary responsibilities while the case manager will coordinate the follow-up. And I believe, unless there are any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Are there any questions for the chief of the Police Department? We are going to wrap things up with the Public Works Department, Mr. Glass.
So I'd like to say I have a, the report that would compete with Ms. Gruber, but.
Always a mess.
That's not going to be the case.
Not happening.
So I just want to wrap things up. Councilmember Cavaci mentioned the cost-saving measures in the Public Works Department, specifically relating to decisions made about grinding the streets or putting down salt. Mr. President, you mentioned that in the past, city employees have had to look for pennies in order to patch potholes. And I am very proud to say that the staff continues to serve under those, that goal and those values of trying to make the best decisions that have the least impact on the budget and have the greatest impact on the residents and the continuity of operation. So while we have a larger budget thankfully, because that's a very stressful situation to be under when you have to really pinch pennies, the staff does operate under that, under that kind of value. So I appreciate it as staff and I'll make sure that you're, you are also aware that those, they're always, they always have that lens of what's the best thing for the city? How can we do it for the cheapest amount? How can we get the most value and still deliver what the council and the departments are looking for? With that, that concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. And, you know, I think we're all well aware that the staff works in that mode and we're very, you know, very proud of the work that they do from, you know, the action you just mentioned to, to setting goats out there to.
That was.
You know, the reservoir.
We did do that.
We did do that indeed.
It was named Roy after my dad.
So, thank you very much. So the final item on our agenda is citizens' comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. Let me remind everyone, this is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns, not exchange, not engage in an exchange or debate or answer questions. For citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermaryland.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters who send us an email should include their address and phone number with their comments. Now, is there anyone here with us tonight who wishes to be heard? If so, please give us your name and address from the record. Hearing no one? That concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be held on Monday, March 14th. Without, without objection, we are adjourned. Please stay safe and healthy.